One of his requirements is to become, you know, the board to sit with us and watch what we do. So tonight, we're going to allow him to bang the gavel, get this meeting going. He's going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, then he has a, what do you have to read?
Um, the Boy Scout oath and law.
The Boy Scout oath and law, alright, so that's what we're going to start with tonight. Nathan, bang the gavel, have everybody stand up. Alright, we're going to all face the flags right over here behind us, and we'll just start. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, Nathan, have a seat in my chair. Have a seat right there, we're going to bring this mic right into you. And you're going to read your oath for everybody, and then we'll go from there. Alright, go right ahead, sir.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to guard my country and to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, and to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. A Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. That was the Scout Oath and Law.
Want to stand there? Want to stand there? I hope you just want to drop by, would you like to take a picture with your father? Yeah, you want to get a picture with him up here? Right, go ahead, goes right off, right around the, right around that, go off, stand right up there. Nathan, Nathan. You can run through the crowd and give high five to him. He did a great job, he could take my place. All the word, Connors. Alright. Okay. Good to go, Mr. Sagerino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two sixty-three is an appointment to the Burlington Cultural Council. I wish to appoint Robert Alasky to the Burlington Cultural Council and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Second. So moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor? Against, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have some appointments to the Public Works Department. John Sanchez is here. Thank you very much to all the Public Works folks for showing up, uh, to support, uh, the new employees. Appreciate that.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman. So, uh, tonight, we're very excited to, uh, introduce, uh, Megan Cavalier for the position of Junior Civil Engineer. And, uh, the reason we are actually proposing her is that we, we lost one of our employees. Uh, Anthony Rebucci, uh, moved to another community, actually, as Assistant Town Engineer. And both Anthony and Steve Hildreth, who here's and I just got their PE, so they're both Registered Professional Engineers. So the good news is they got their PE. Uh, bad news is, as, as they get, uh, to be Professional Engineers, they have more opportunities. And that creates openness within the department. We're very excited that the two of them actually got, uh, to be, uh, Professional Engineers while working, uh, for our Engineering Department, a full Engineering Division here at the DPW. So tonight, I'm recommending, uh, Megan. Uh, Tom Hayes and I, Town Engineer, uh, offer interviews to three applicants out of many applications we got for this job. Uh, Megan has a Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineer from the University of Massachusetts in Lowell. She's currently working for a consulting company, but prior to, uh, graduation, she worked for us for three, uh, summers and, um, uh, winter breaks, uh, as, as one of our engineers, and she actually was a, uh, a real good assistant and learnt a lot well with us. Um, in addition to her Engineering Degree, she passed her Engineering Training Certificate. She's also pursuing a Master's in Engineering Management. And she also, uh, has as a goal to obtain a degree and, and sorry, a Professional Engineering License. Uh, Megan also has an OSHA ten certificate, and she's proficient in all the software that we use in engineering, such as AutoCAD and all their calculation software. So we're really looking forward to see her joining, uh, as a full-time employee in the DPW.
And with Mr. Sanchez's recommendation, uh, I appoint Megan Cavalier to the position of Junior Civil Engineer for the Public Works Engineering Division, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Hold the second in, uh, any discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, against? Is she here?
She is here.
Would you like to have her come down? Before you leave, though, you're going to have to have a seat, because a couple of questions that your father told me to ask you. No, I'm only kidding, you really don't have to. Your father did say, your father did say a few things to me the other day, but, uh, I told him I'd be nice. And I, the only person who's very happy for you is Rachel. I heard Rachel's very, very happy for you to be back in that office again, so, Mr. Sanchez, I think you're in trouble.
Yes, big time.
They're going to gang up on you, it's going to be great. Need any help, let me know.
So, uh, the next, uh, recommendation I have is for the position of Pump Station Operator. And, uh, both for, uh, positions of, uh, Pump Operator as well as, uh, Heavy Equipment Operator, since we have so many applicants, we conduct interviews together with the Highway and Water and Sewer Divisions. So, uh, both, uh, Paul Baron and Kevin Keen join of all the interviews of all the applicants. And tonight, I'm recommending Alexander DeAlmeida Jr. for the position of Pump Station Operator. Alex is a Burlington resident and currently working for the Laborers Union Twenty-two as a construction laborer. Uh, but he has experience doing, uh, the stuff that we do in, uh, the DPW as well as sewer, particularly installing, uh, general utilities on-site constructions. He also has a CDLA license with tank endorsement, which is very useful and required for sewer jobs. And, uh, with that, I'm recommending, uh, Alex for the position, and I hope that he join us soon in the department.
And with Mr. Sanchez's recommendation, I appoint Alexander DeAlmeida to the position of Pump Station Operator for the Public Works Water Sewer Division, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Um, Alex, I know you're here because you're bringing us pizza. Congratulations. Congratulations. Watch your voice.
I'll be waiting for that.
I don't know your father, so go ahead, it's all good.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, the last recommendation I have tonight is, uh, for the position of Special Heavy Motor Equipment Operator. So I'm recommending Anthony DeSimone for that position. After interviews and, uh, review of all qualifications, I'm recommending him for the job. Anthony has been a mechanic for the last ten years. He's currently actually employed with the School Department here in Burlington, uh, filling in after, uh, the place of work that he had actually, I believe, sold out, so, uh, so they closed down the shop. Uh, but Anthony has a CDL-B license and also a Hoist and Two-A license. So, uh, with that, I recommend Anthony for the position, and again, I hope that he can join us soon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with Mr. Sanchez's recommendation, I wish to appoint Anthony DeSimone to the position of Special Heavy Motor Equipment Operator for the Public Works Highway Division, and ask that the board waive its standard fifteen-day waiting period.
Gentlemen? So move the second in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against the post? Five zero zero. Anthony?
Thank you.
Are you here?
Here.
Congratulations. Your father's out there, right? He is out there, you want a, you want a picture with him? Yeah, I see him back there. Hi, bud, Wyatt. Alright, ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight, I'm very excited and pleased to present to you the town's first Economic Development Director. Uh, before I continue with that, I would like to acknowledge all the hard work done by the Search Committee. Uh, they did an unbelievable job, and we had attracted an incredibly talented pool of candidates. Uh, on that committee, we had Selectman Runyon and Selectman Priest, uh, Whitney Haskell from the Finance Office, John Keely from Conservation, Kristen Kazner from the Planning Department, uh, Sonya Rollins from Town Meeting, Rick Parker from the Chamber, uh, former Town Administrator Bob Mercier, and it was all coordinated by our HR Director Joanne Faust. I would personally like to thank everybody, uh, for their support of this initiative. Uh, we are beyond excited to get started. Uh, now on to the important stuff, which is the important appointment. Uh, our candidate is Melissa Tentakalas. Uh, Melissa comes to us with a wealth of experience in the field of economic development. Since two thousand and twelve, Melissa has served as the Economic Development Director for the Town of Lexington, where she has worked on numerous projects that benefited their town center, as well as a major initiative to reinvent Lexington's Hartwell Avenue Commercial District. Uh, prior to that, she worked as an Economic Development Planner for the City of Somerville. Uh, Melissa's a California native and holds a Master's in Planning from the University of Michigan. Uh, I know that the Search Committee was very impressed with her credentials, and I have to say, she has an infectious energy and excitement toward economic development here in town. And with that introduction, uh, I'll open up to the board for any comment or further discussion.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, what I'd like to do is bring Melissa up right now before we get going on this. Thank you, Melissa. I know some of us were raised by your presence earlier tonight, we got to meet you very quickly. And I know the gentleman did a great job on the, uh, the subcommittee, uh, to hire you. Uh, the candidates were quite a few, so you impressed a lot of people. Um, I'm going to turn it over to you guys right now, and I got a couple more comments afterwards, so, Paul, we'll start.
No, we'll start with those who would.
Start with those, okay, never mind, we'll start over.
Sure, I'll go first. De facto first. Melissa, I, I, I have no questions. Uh, it was a pleasure getting to know you during the interview process. Uh, and, you know, seeing, uh, what you've accomplished in Lexington, uh, I think is fantastic. I am thrilled, I think, you know, we've been saying now for a number of years, um, that, you know, despite the fact that, you know, Burlington has maintained a, a very popular stance in the, in the region, uh, that the communities around us are upping their game, uh, and we do not want to find ourselves holding an empty bag. Uh, and so I think, you know, the proactive nature that the town took, uh, to seek this role, and the fortunate, uh, set of circumstances that led you to us, uh, will hopefully lead to, uh, nothing but continued prosperous, uh, or pro- yeah. Prosperity, there's the word I'm looking for, uh, here in town, so, welcome, thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the entire board of selectmen and to the town of Burlington. I'm really excited to be here and look forward to working for the residents and support just an eclectic and strong kind of commercial environment that supports the whole community, so I'm really excited about that.
Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Melissa, good to see you again. Uh, I want to, I do want to give a, a, I know you mentioned Joanne Faust, but I would like to mention her again for assisting us, uh, throughout this entire process. She was very, very helpful, putting all the materials together for us, and it, and with the amount of candidates, uh, that we did have for that position, having her, um, you know, set everything up for us was indeed, uh, I thought very, very helpful, so. Uh, no, uh, we're very excited to have you on board, it's a position we've been having a lot of discussion about for, for a lot of years here, and I'm, I'm just thrilled that we finally, uh, come to this day. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Melissa, obviously, I just met you tonight for the first time, but looking at, overlooking your resume, it's, it's amazing the things you've accomplished and, um, I don't know whether we should thank the Town of Lexington for prepping you for it, but, uh, looks like we, uh, have a very, very, uh, well-rounded, uh, educated First Economic Developer, and I, I also want to, uh, thank the committee as well, because I'm sure it was a lot of work. I, I can't remember how many candidates total there were, but, you know, there were a lot.
Substantial, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, but welcome aboard and, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Actually, uh, I just met you tonight also, uh, along with Jim, and we're very excited, uh, again, we've been talking about this position, and we've kind of elevated the importance of it, and I'm glad to see that the, uh, committee did an excellent job in picking the right person to join us, so welcome.
Well, thank you, and thank you again for your confidence in me, and I look forward to working for you and the town.
Um, I met you, I wish you the best of luck, it's a great town to work in, as you can tell by the support of everyone getting hired, everyone coming out to see what they're, they're all about, so, um, wish you all the best here. Like I say, this committee, I'd like to thank the committee for the job they did. Got the insight from Paul, so, we, we're in a great town, we're going to do better and better. Well, congratulations.
I'll sit.
Yep, good.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I wish to appoint Melissa Tentakalas to the position of Economic Development Director for the Town of Burlington, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Absolutely.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
Melissa, you have your family with you? Would you like to photograph? Absolutely. Would you like us to get out of the way?
We don't make very good scenery.
He's back there biting his tongue so bad right now.
Can we do it all together?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can do one at a time, you can do them together, you can do them on the table, behind the chairs, whatever you want to do.
Maybe all together, um, in front of this table?
Oh, you meant us?
Yeah.
Oh, no, us, no.
Yeah, everyone. All, everyone.
Why don't we do this, why don't you take one with your family first? Just with your family, then we'll be there now. I thought she meant with all of us, like the four of us.
I do mean for all of us.
Okay, now what do you want?
Before we-
Was it something that?
Yeah.
Uh, we all that way, yeah, we all.
Is that kind of wide enough?
No, that should be fine.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we continue on with another very important appointment for the town. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, all the members of the department, past and present, who came out for this, uh, very important, uh, event. As everybody knows, Chief Yetman retired last August, and we've been working, uh, with Assistant Chief Patterson as interim chief since then. Uh, we were finally able to get our process to replace the chief started this past fall, when the board determined that we should begin our search by interviewing candidates within the department. Uh, we formed a search committee consisting of myself, Chief Kent, uh, Selectman Tigas, uh, Ed McLean from the Firefighters Union, and Chief Greg Burns from the Town of Reading. And again, the whole process was coordinated by, uh, Human Resources Director Joanne Faust. Uh, we interviewed three very impressive candidates from within the department, uh, which made it a challenging decision for our committee. Uh, despite this, we were able to come to a consensus as a committee as to who our next chief should be, and I'm happy to tell you that that person is Mike Patterson. Uh, Mike grew up here in Burlington, graduated Burlington High School. Uh, he holds a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Salem State University. He's also received several important certifications, uh, from national and state fire organizations. Uh, he started in the department in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, was promoted to Lieutenant in nineteen ninety-four, Captain in two thousand and two, and since two thousand and ten has served as our Assistant Chief. Uh, he will become the fifth chief in the town's history. Uh, with that as an introduction, I would open up to the board for any questions or further discussion. Mike?
Thank you, Paul.
So, gentlemen, where would you like to start? Michael, the other, you work there, so, like, any comments or?
Better say something good, Mike.
Want you to approve?
He better say something good, I have him for another few months.
I really thought he was going to say, "I retire."
I, I, I will say this, now, I've known Mike, um, uh, for thirty years now. It is certainly, uh, an honor to be able to, uh, sit here and be part of this process. As Paul mentioned, you know, we've only had five chiefs, uh, in our, uh, department history here, and so this is really sort of a hi- historic occasion, and I'm just thrilled that I can be a part of it here tonight. And I see Chief Yetman in the back there, and a number of your, your coworkers as well, very nice turnout tonight.
Yeah, Chief Callahan's back there in the, uh, in the audience, too.
Chief Callahan, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there he is, okay, right, chief. Once a chief, always a chief, if you can remember that. Yeah, no, it's absolutely an, an honor to be part of the process here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, if the crowd in this room isn't testament to the type of person you are in your career, I don't know what is. So thank you for everything and, and congratulations.
Absolutely, Nick, I mean, uh, family, friends, coworkers, uh, play a huge part in, in who you are, and, um, I can say I'm lucky, uh, to have my family's full support behind me. Lucky to have, uh, the support of my friends, uh, many of whom showed up tonight. Um, and, uh, lucky to have the support of many of my coworkers that, uh, that stand behind me as we speak. So I feel blessed, I, I feel humbled. You know, I've had the pleasure of working in this community for the past thirty years. Uh, I look forward to continuing, uh, the good work, uh, and working with Paul and his staff. And like I said, it's a, a humbling experience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo what Paul, uh, what Paul said earlier, three outstanding candidates. It, you know, any one, any one of them would, would, will make a fine chief. But, uh, of course, we have to come down to that decision of, of naming someone, and, Mike, I'm just looking at your certifications, pages and pages of certifications. Your, uh, your resume is, is tremendous. Um, I've worked side by, you know, not side by side, but on occasion with you.
Sure.
Certain things, and, uh, just want to say congratulations, and, uh, you've got a great department behind you, and I think you'll do well.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in education. Uh, there's a lot of opportunities in the, in the fire service to, to better yourself, better your career, and, um, I've chosen that path, um, and, uh, a lot of that led me to where I am tonight, so.
As a president, we have given you a new fi- we gave you a new fire station, too, so.
And we, we certainly appreciate that, and, you know, there, there's been a lot of chiefs before me that laid the groundwork. Um, you know, when I was hired thirty-one years ago, um, you know, I can never forget my interview with Paul Tebow. Paul said, you know, "We want fifteen-man shifts." "We want to advance, uh, to the, uh, paramedic level of service." And, and a lot of these things are all coming to fruition right now as we speak, so. Not going to have too much time to sit back and reflect right now, because there's a lot of work to be done, uh, moving forward, and, and I look forward to that.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, um. Michael, it has been an honor to work with you, um, over the last several years, not only as a Selectman, but as a department head.
Sure.
Um, and I've had the opportunity of knowing Paul Tebow and Lee Callahan and Steve Yetman.
Yep.
And I look forward to hearing the stories that the employees start talking about you. To see if they match up to the ones to your predecessors, so, congratulations, um, and your, your department's in good hands.
I mean, once again, I feel, I feel blessed to be in this position. You know, we have a real strong department, uh, a great group of people, um, in all aspects of the job. I think this community is lucky to have, uh, such a great public safety, um, group, and that includes police, fire, and DPW, and I look forward to continue working with them as we move forward.
Gentlemen, thank you. Um, Mike, I, what else can I really say? Everyone's really said quite a bit already tonight. Um, if you could sit here and look at the glow on your face right now to say to be, to be, you know, are the chief of the Fire Department of Burlington, Massachusetts.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of chiefs in, in the Commonwealth.
If you're the fifth one in this town, and on your side there, you have your wife and your two boys.
Yep.
And, uh, if their smiles get any bigger, uh, I don't know what's going to happen, so, all I can say is congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Alright, so.
We had, oh, rearranged schedules, uh, for, for my youngest boy, and my older boy had to reschedule a, uh, midterm at his, at his college, uh, so they could make it here.
You have a lot of support in the back behind you.
Much appreciated.
You have the chief of police back there, he's standing back there very happy for you right now.
Chief Kent is a great guy, who I, I had a pleasure, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with, uh, that I look forward to continue to work with, as well as Deputy Brown, and the whole, the whole department.
Excellent. Paul?
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I wish to appoint Michael Patterson to the position of Fire Chief for the Town of Burlington, and ask the board to waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So move the second in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against? Five zero zero, congratulations. So we're going to do pitches now?
Just going to do a pitch.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, we're going to pin the badge, huh?
So in a, uh, in a, in a fire service tradition.
Oh, yes, you're going to wind up on this one.
So, in a, in the tradition of the fire service, I can have, I asked my wife to pin the badge.
Last chance.
So we practiced this at Harlem with each other. So this is my oldest boy, Matthew, my youngest boy, Steven. Can I get a picture with my mother as well?
Oh, yeah.
This is my mother, Marilyn Patterson. Just a couple more, if you can fail, let fail, can bring my in-laws up there, too. So now we have two chiefs in the family, myself, and we have a, our common law dentist is a retired Navy chief. Can I get one more picture with, uh, Troy Olful, please? Buddy Troy, why do you guys know Buddy Troy here?
We've heard about him.
No, just me here. And maybe one more picture if we can get the fire department members in here real quick around me, and then. My ear was gone, it was crazy.
Get you guys down on the ground. Only those that don't need a crane to pick you back up, please.
One final picture. Nice stash. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll just take a couple minutes, Paul, to.
I literally was falling.
So he's going down?
Yeah.
Sorry, I fell right after, too.
I got that other, I got that other boy scout back there. I didn't know what to do with him.
It's got 15 degrees cooler.